...two thousand nineteen in the Calvin County Council. So, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. For the presence, we thank you for the opportunity to come forward people and discuss the business this county and then we make those decisions that beneficial to them and then move your side of the party. Christ, thank you.
Amen. Need approval of the ministry regular meeting, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, to the budget work session, April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved. Second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Any committee reports?
No, sir.
No appointments?
No, sir.
Revolution and proclamation, yeah, revolution three dash twenty nineteen, a revolution establishing agreeing to participate in the local regional consortium.
Mr. Chairman, I move we participate in the, our, that we pass revolution three dash two twenty nineteen, to participate in the consortium.
Have a second.
Sir?
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Parents, parents is human resource director, Randy Robertson, for the health insurance.
Yes, thank you. I'll before you tonight to request basically the absorption of our increase for our health insurance. Our health insurance, we decided to stay with Wood Crosswood Shield this year on the A's the best rates and actually only increased our rates two percent. And what I'm asking the council to approve tonight is that the county actually absorb that two percent increase so that we leave the cost for the employees the same. Also, the dental insurance went up three percent, I'm asking council to pass that along to the employees. It's only going to be between fifty cent and dollar fifty depending on which coverage you elect per pay period, so it's, it's very minimal cost.
Anyone have any questions to bring in?
What's the actual amount of the two percent, please, approximately?
About thirty to three thousand odd a year.
Total?
Over the course of entire year.
Okay.
And I have one more thing after y'all pass that. If you want to pass it.
Yeah, motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass the, that we accept that we cover the cost of the increase in our health insurance.
Have a second.
Sir?
Probably move it second, any further discussion of that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Ready to adjourn?
Yes, sir, the other thing that I'm going to ask you guys about approving tonight is the contract for the employee assistance program through Tri-County Commission on Alcohol and Drug Use. This is a plan that I presented at the work session that will benefit our employees for about, it's seventeen dollars per employee per year, so it's around a four thousand dollar cost.
Chairman, refresh us again on what that was.
So that's an employee assistance program, so basically what they're going to offer is the Tri-County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Use right here in Orangeburg. They're going to be offering counseling services, rehab type services, things like that locally for our employees.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, what, what, what do we do?
We need to accept the contract for services.
Accept contract for services for employee, whatever she said.
The Tri-County Commission on Alcohol and Drug Use.
Second, have a second.
Sir?
Probably move it second, any further discussion?
Thank y'all.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am. Delinquent tax collector, Tammy?
Hi, I'm Jane Green, tax collector, Kevin McHoney. I'm here this evening to request that you approve for me to increase the cost that I asked for next year's taxes, the next taxes. Like passes out what I've asked a few tax collectors within other counties, what they charged you to see about what, about what they charge. And I had a few responses from the other collectors in comparison to what we charge here with the other county. And the reason for the request to increase is because the certified mail postage decrease has a majority of it that would help us to not go in the hole with mail out bills to the taxpayer. So this list just shows about what other counties charge and we're at sixty-five. So if I could increase it to a hundred, that would help a little bit with the postage and certified mail and, um...
That will still be cheaper than anybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still cheap.
I don't want to go overboard and charge too much, but I wouldn't be, would help.
Who's got all this cost, Tammy, the people?
That question?
Who paid?
Who paid that?
We have a taxpayer to pay that.
The delinquent?
Bill now.
And Mr. James, in council, our delinquency has gone up every year in the past three years. Tammy and I got together to bring some numbers. And so our delinquent collections have been higher and our current collections are down. And that's been trending that way for the past three years. So this may even help deter people from paying the taxes late if they, you know, know that the cost may increase.
I think I'm mailing out more delinquent bills than anything in the past three years since I've been in this.
I think the minimum cost on the at Bamber, carry a hundred and ten dollars, someone has three hundred and twenty-five dollars. With a hundred dollars, we want at least a couple of our costs, we don't want to, somebody delinquent, we don't want to, I mean, pay for them to be delinquent, I don't think, that's fair, that's true. To us, I think, you know, I think we, if the, I want the rest of council, I think we at least need to give the rest, at least the minimum county getting that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put a form of motion. I move that we, in light of what's on here, that we charge a, I would say a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee for delinquent taxes.
Sound like a good one, but we have, nobody else, council. Anybody want to second that motion?
See, first round, we're on the left side.
Yeah, that would put us in the middle.
Actually, still on the left side.
Yeah.
I have, the counties in Bamber was a county that has population culture tiles and that's what she had, she charged, you know, ads on her posts.
Why don't we go to that, that number for now and then we can?
What now?
Why don't we go to what, she's, comparing to population?
Well, all right, I mean, without a second, my motion dies, so you don't, oh, you got to make another motion?
I'll make a motion if we go to the hundred and ten, that needs matched, that way we're not surpassing anybody.
Yeah, we got it.
Then if we need to adjust it, if we're still, if it's costing us money, we can come back next year. But jump out, because we're going from sixty-five to one-twenty, it's almost up.
Yes, I know, definitely.
I'll make a motion, let's take at least what Bamber's charging, a hundred and ten dollars.
Yes, yes, sir.
Probably move it second, any further discussion? Tammy, what I, what I would like you to do first, and I would like you to keep us informed on what your actual cost, because I don't want to pay for the delinquent people, I mean, I, I mean, we can't afford to pay the rise on the level of the delinquent. So, if you keep us informed, we have to make sure that we ain't the black. I don't think we want to be on the ground.
Yeah, and this is, if, this is something that somebody can avoid paying by, by paying the tax one time, you know?
Yes, because they don't add the cost until May third, they have to do May third to pay it without the cost being added on.
So that's a large grace period in there.
Yeah, from March to May, so they do have time.
No more further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no more appearances. And the old business, uh, the old Sandy Run Road Highway twenty-one dash one seventy-six, let us lead up to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As y'all might remember, one of the issues that Colonel Nelson and I have been discussing with SEDOT for a while now is that front of the station there at the corner of twenty-one and one seventy-six and Old Sandy Run Road is an area that was very clearly marked with yellow stripe paint for a long time, but was not intended for any vehicles to be parked there. It shows the problems that the trucks were causing there with the line of sight as folks tried to turn off of Old Sandy Run onto the road and it was blocking the line of sight. Unfortunately, no one was obeying the, they was parking the vehicles right on top of the stripes and there was no retribution for it. I'm pleased to say that DOT has recognized that something had to be done, working with them. They put some temporary three-foot cones out there with some sandbags to study the traffic in the area that happens when they mark it off. And the sooner it goes like we think it's going to, they tend to put a permanent post there that are about that height to make sure that that area is not to be for parking, it is just an unsafe area for large trucks to park in, so we're glad they did that. Colonel, I prefer you to make any additional comments.
Yeah, I just, I had a meeting actually with them today, we probably spent thirty minutes up there, Ms. Jacobs and her, one of her traffic engineers and the owner of the store. Let me just say for the record, y'all put us in minutes if you want to, that Ms. Jacobs is doing a phenomenal job to help us out, SEDO, this county, and she really has worked with us several times and she has very can do, so I appreciate that very much. And so, but she met with us and the owner wanted to shorten up the area a little bit, he's had some chat, traffic congestion issues, and there's always a plus and a minus to these things, because people now have an maneuver and they do differently than they've done before. But what it has done is kept people from parking there where you can't see when you make a left turn, it's really, it's very dangerous when it happens. So what, what we agreed to for now, and I think hopefully her Columbia office will abide by this, is shorten up the area just a little bit on the Columbia side where it's open, but try that, if that works, and then put the permanent, what they call delineators, delineators in the yellow posts that are about three foot tall, they're reflective after several months. And hopefully I'll stop them from parking there, that'll save for them stuff.
Are they a breakaway?
They're a breakaway, they're like, I mean, if someone drives over them, they're not going to cause injury or damage to your car, but they have to replace them. But if, if you go up on number one, right where the Lowe's is, they're like between Lowe's and the interstate, they have them up there, because that's a very busy intersection with the access road up there, they've had a lot of accidents. And we've had some accidents here as well. And, and, and of course, one of the things that she worked with us on recently too, along with the delegation help us as well, is that whole area now is a mandatory forty-five, it used to be a recommended, so we're hoping by slowing the traffic in there by doing this, it's going to make it a lot safer. And she's a big part of that, I really appreciate her, you know, show my appreciation to public for that, for her, for most, but that's where we're at, so.
Tammy, you have any other old business?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Under new business, we have approval of the computer service agreement with the Public Q software. We have that.
Okay, so our software company QS One went up this year on our maintenance contract about ten and a half percent mainly because of the state mandate for us to bill boats monthly now, like we do vehicles. So normally we bill our boats every three years in accordance with DNR and their regulations with the state, so now the state's mandated us to bill monthly, like vehicles. So that module for the software system is eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars just to start billing boats monthly. And the maintenance fee on that module is two thousand nine seventy-five per year, that's our yearly maintenance on that module. And then our contract amount without the boat module is a hundred and fifty-three thousand four oh six forty-eight, or a total of one seventy-four seven hundred.
Do we have a choice?
No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move we actually agree with the public software for the boat, to add the boat, tax, taxes up on that. Second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion?
I got a question, you said it will be monthly, that means we'll, boats will get a yearly statement?
Once a year.
Once a year.
But like vehicles, you know, it just depends on what month you purchase the boat.
Right, right, I just.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be mailing out notices monthly, but not to the same person.
But it's, like you said, it's three years.
Okay. Yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Tammy, any other thing under the business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have pile orders to commit. Orders twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven, the second reading is on poll. Orders twenty nineteen dash four, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the appropriation of funds in the levy of taxes for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty for the operation of debt services, building, funding, food service, the public schools of Calvin County, the Orangeburg Calvin Technical College, and the Calvin County District Health and Special Needs Board, including the Elmar and Aggressive Center, to provide for deposit dispersment of funds and to provide otherwise for the affairs of public education, Calvin County may have a motion for first reading by title only.
So moved.
Sir?
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Orders twenty nineteen dash five, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for capital improvements and debt services for Calvin County for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, for the expenditures they owe and other funds and provide otherwise for the affairs of the county, may have a motion for approval, first reading on that.
So moved.
Tammy? Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Orders twenty nineteen dash six, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes, Calvin County to operate and maintain water and wastewater for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, for the expenditures they owe and other funds and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county, may have a motion for approval.
So I'll make a motion, second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Orders twenty nineteen dash seven, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the funds for county purposes for Calvin County to operate and maintain Calvin Hills Golf Complex for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, for the expenditures they owe and other funds and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county, may have a motion for first reading.
So moved. I'll say.
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Orders twenty nineteen dash eight, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the levy of four point four meals taxes to operate and maintain Sandy Run Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and to appropriate other, other funds for the expenditures they owe and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Sandy Run Fire District, may have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise. Orders twenty nineteen dash nine, my first reading by title only, an ordinance to appropriate and authorize funds to operate and maintain Calvin County Rule Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, for the expenditures they owe, to provide free meals for the debt service and to provide otherwise for the affairs, Calvin County Rule Fire District, may have a motion for approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise. Orders twenty nineteen dash ten, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for Calvin, for county purposes for Calvin County for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county, may have a motion.
So moved.
Sir?
Probably move it second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. Orders twenty nineteen dash eleven, first reading only, an ordinance to amend chapter two, article one, section two dash one of the Calvin County Code, an ordinance to designate legal holidays for Calvin County and for services thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move it second, any further discussion of that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise ayes have it. I think that complete our orders. Tammy, down to you, Mr. Minister.
Good job, Mr. Chairman. For my monthly reports tonight, we're going to start with animal control. For the month of April, twenty nineteen, we filled, we filled in sixty-eight complaints, which led to eighty-two complaint trips, and six of those calls were fielded after hours. We had eleven calls from the town of Saint Matthews, which led to nineteen complaint trips, and one from the town of Cameron, which led to one complaint trip. A total of thirty-two animals, twenty-eight dogs, and four cats were taken into the shelter during the month. Twenty-four of them were either redeemed by the owner, adopted, or sent to a rescue organization, twenty-four of the dogs. We always have a goal of zero euthanizations at our animal shelter, but unfortunately, we did have two, two pit bulls that had to be euthanized. There were no court cases in April, we took in thirty dollars in donations, collected five hundred and seventy-four dollars in fees from adoptions and rescues, and had four hundred and twenty dollars in medical expenses. And finally, mosquito spraying is in full swing for twenty nineteen. As I reported previously, we had to start a little earlier than normal this year because we had some rainy weather, and we started getting some earlier calls. And as always, we are aware of the potential danger to pollinators that mosquito spraying can cause, so we are in touch as best we can be with all of the hive locations of which we are aware to make sure we protect them. And if anyone knows of someone who may have a new hive about which we may be, which we're unaware, please let us know or have them give us a call, because we want to protect our bees. And I'll be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Anyone have any questions for Ted or me? Okay, go to next, maybe some ground, or?
Maybe some ground reports, it's in your package tonight, it's the fourth of January twenty nineteen, excuse me, for, am I right, for April of twenty nineteen. See, all the work requests were completed, so the twenty-nine jobs, we appreciate the great job Marcus is doing with building the grounds, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Ted or me, just a last, not sure, go to building and planning?
Building and planning, as you know, I bring you updates on them, brought, that were, we have them by Jeffrey Harvey, our building official. This report will cover the month of April twenty nineteen. For that time period, we issued a total of twenty-four permits, completed seventy-two inspections, and had six plat reviews. We collected three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars in revenue, and I was asked by council member after last report if I could give an idea of how things were compared to last year, which I can do. Compared to April of twenty eighteen, our revenue is up this year by twenty-four percent. And I'll be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Ted or me? USDA broadband program?
Yes, sir. As council may be aware, we have a glaring problem in certain areas of the county, especially the Sandy Run area, with not having strong enough broadband service available to our citizens. I'm pleased to say that USDA and the federal government have finally taken some active steps to try to help rural counties address this. There is a reconnect program opportunity through USDA that's going to be here both this year and next year, where areas such as ours and the local governments can, can partner with internet service providers to address areas that have less than ten-one service, and I've had that explained to me, that basically the entire Sandy Run area has a maximum capacity to get to six for your service of the residents. This has nothing to do with businesses, this is just residences. And, and so if you are in an area like that, you're eligible to partner up with an ISP and go after some funds. We have been meeting with a lot of potential partners on that. It's a combination of opportunities for you, you can go for a one-hundred percent grant, a fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan, or a one-hundred percent low interest loan. And as I said, the opportunity will be here this year and next year, and we feel good about finding a partner, going after those funds. And Colonel Nelson, I want to give him credit, responding to a constituent of his, has really been working well with us on this, and I'll be happy to let you make any comments you want to throw at us at this time.
It's been, it's been very good to see the interest of, I won't mention her name right now, I don't want to embarrass the public, but I definitely, at the right time, want to make, oh, I understand, she's done some really good research. So we'll definitely keep pushing on that, I appreciate the meeting we had that day with Chad Lauer, and I hope to find a, to mention everyone of the ISP groups or entities we're looking at, I think they'd be a great match here, and particularly with regard to, I think, these co-ops diversifying now, it looks like it's not just here, but it's other places, it looks like it's a very good match. And I certainly appreciate, appreciate the staff, I know Denise and Bob are trying to get some tax figures, but we've pulled this off, it'd be good to get the newest and best fiber throughout our area and throughout whole county, matter of fact. I mean, I'd like to see this come to here, because I know with windscreen, we've got issues down here with, I mean, it's a county wide problem, it's not just Sandy Run. But if we can get that, it'd really help, I mean, in so many ways, people work home now. And I know in our area, we have a real closed system of old copper and, and the fiber, if we can get a hundred percent fiber in the first short term, it would really boost us to know, particularly with the development, so.
This is in, this was in this month, South Carolina living, or recently in South Carolina? The magazine, from the co-op, I think, or?
It could have been, I didn't specifically read that article, I just know that now, you know, it's time to really try to get it free.
Where, maybe the Blue Ridge or one of the co-ops?
Oh, yeah, with regard to co-ops, yeah.
Yes, with regard to co-ops in the South Carolina living magazine that they put out, I think I read.
It's a smart diversification, I think, for them, because with the solar, you know, the legislature just passed the more liberal solar law, just, we talked about that in a few weeks, but, you know, I'm doing it, I mean, personally, there are other people doing it, and obviously it's competitive with them, and I think very wise for them to diversify. And in so doing, it'll very, help very much help population, folks working home, live kind of on the beaten path, it'd be good to have similar speeds than our friends that live in bigger cities, that'd be really a good thing for everybody, I think. We'll see what happens with it.
We appreciate the extra work you've given with that. Next, we have a potential sale of the landfill permit.
As council may recall, when we first started talking, I think, two years ago about the inevitable closing of landfill, we started getting approached then by folks about interest in purchasing our landfill permits, so that the private sector, they chose to try to work out some type of landfill with de-heck. While at the time, we weren't sure exactly what was going to happen, so those discussions never went to air, but now we have made the formal decision, we've entered into a cap enclosure process and monitoring landfill for thirty years, so we're getting out of landfill business. And there is still value attached to that permit, and we've been approached by one of those folks again, and we explained to him when he met with us that if we were going to do that, we would certainly have to put that out to the public and make it available to anyone who was interested in purchasing that, if that's the way council wanted to go. Before we even went down that road, I wanted to come and discuss it with you and see if there was any interest in that, it's not something we have to do, but it could allow us the opportunity, right now, we're taking a lot of stuff to Orangeburg, as you know, we could probably, we could possibly work out a much better rate for that situation if that person was to ever be able to open a landfill, maybe could, you know, help negotiate things there. We certainly could talk about our future collection site, needs there related to that, there's a lot of things we could do, but before we went and did anything, I just wanted to bring up the topic and see if there was any interest from council to do.
I, I think it's one thing, Ted, I, I think we can talk with them, but we want to make sure that we don't get stuck in a big deal down the road if somebody else get it, we get stuck with a big deal, and I, I would like to have that discussion, but.
We understand, and again, we made it very clear that it would be a very public process, it would be a very open process, and that other people would be able to try to weigh in on it, so. Y'all are interested, I guess?
I'm in.
Here we are.
Okay. And then there's a tract of land near Palmetto, in the, right on the upper tip of the county, right near Pass Gone, that's Mr. Jordan Newton of Newton Truck Parts was interested in purchasing a piece of property, it's owned by a candidate, we actually own a very small three-acre parcel up there, and I've got to pass this thing out so you can see it. He's interested in purchasing that, same response from me to him as I gave to the person about the landfill permit, council is interested in doing that, that is fine, but we would recommend that we put that out and to the public and advertise it and take bids on it and give everybody a chance who might be interested in that, doing that. I just wanted to see if y'all are interested in that. Palmetto there ends on a pole, Zach, and it's places I told you about.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in putting it out, if you love it.
Okay.
We're in no obligation to sell it at free.
We can reject a bid, right?
Yeah, we can look at it.
Right, reject it in all bids.
What the benefits would be to keep that permit, and then what benefits would be to sell that permit?
More property advertising.
Yeah, that's a piece of property that's going.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, you mean that?
That's what I think Cecil talked about, when he.
I'm stopping back, I'm still, I'm slowly catching up. I'm still talking about the landfill permit.
We'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we can pursue it.
I'll be happy to get the information, there's no obligation, just. And Mr. Chairman, one item, and I apologize that we wanted to just didn't make the agenda and not ask for any action. I just want to bring everybody up to date on what's happening with the Sandy Run area plan. At the end of last week, the Central Midland Council of Governments Transportation Committee, of which we have a seat as part of the COAT. as part of the COGS, the Columbia Area Transportation Study Region, uh, actually, uh, passed the, uh, Sandy Run area plan on from that committee to the full Central Midlands Council of Governments Board, and that'll be taken up later in May. Uh, we have been, this has been a very public process in the area. It's actually a federal grant that was granted to us via the Central Midlands Council uh, where the federal government paid eighty thousand, we paid the twenty thousand amount of match to study the transportation improvements and land use needs that are gonna come to the Sandy Run area after they start improving Agent One Twenty-Five. As they're working on Agent One Nineteen right now. Uh, Colonel Nelson's been real involved with me on this. We've had numerous public meetings about this and including Chili Cook Off there. And, uh, we had a, uh, an event in Mount Moriah. We had a couple of events at the, the Government Center. Um, the EMS Station Trainer, and this was not the Government Center, please, excuse me. And, um, we're just really pleased that it's moving on. And then before it becomes official, it has to be taken up here by this body and due by the public. So, uh, we'll get a chance to do that this summer. And I'll be, Colonel Nelson, please supplement any comments you'd like.
Yeah, just, that, that's been a great effort too. Of course, the entire staff here helped out tremendously with that. And, uh, uh, Mr. John, uh, this is why I said, Arner, Arner's group did a great job. That study group came in. And, uh, I, you know, I think we have a real broad section of inputs. Sounds like anything, getting inputs from our folks in the community. But I've read through the near final draft, and it's very substantive. It's got dollars attached to improvements and looking out, you know, five, ten years and beyond. I mean, some very substance to things that will certainly help transportation needs in the community. And, uh, with dollars tied to it, that'd get funded, obviously.
Yes, sir.
So it's a very worthwhile study, I think. And it, and with the public, are we thinking milling? Is that reasonable?
Absolutely, that's what I.
I mean, it gets out to everybody. Sure, everybody can have access to it. No, that's a good thing. So, thanks for everybody's call.
John, you wanted to comment on that, but you told me about the, you, you look for the paving on that. You took the paving.
Oh, oh, yeah. But, yeah, I mentioned one of, this is another good thing. I, in fact, I wrote, just signed a letter to the company. They, they just did paving in on, uh, uh, I mean, it's Old Sandy Run Road. I, I was unaware they were gonna do that. All of a sudden, they started doing a project, which was great. But one of the things the company did, and I would mention this, is light paving. And a lot of times, we probably have problems with contractors and people that do work. It's always the negative side. But I was coming home from work one morning. I saw them down in front of the fire department. I just went down to see them. I looked them up, you know, Mr. Chadler. And what they were doing was they were adding pavement in front of the fire department. It was not, it wasn't part of the contract to do it. It was basically, they, they were giving that extra section to just complete, you know, the old pavement, and, and it's a fire department. But they were spending time there to tidy it up, tie it in the road, and did that as an extra service. And of course, the quality and the time it's been on the road is very good too. So I just wanted to thank that whole organization life. And I'd certainly like them to bid again. I'd like for them to certainly bid and, and be a part of it because they were outstanding. And they, they basically donated that paving in front of Sandy Run Fire Department. Did a great job. And we appreciate it very much.
I think I, I wanted him to mention that because a lot of times, we are critical of people where they do wrong.
Absolutely.
We don't congratulate people where they do the right thing. So appreciate that.
Yeah.
Uh, Ted, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Does the press have any questions before we go into invigoration?
So, um, that evening, thousands must suck the software. Big delivery taxes, thirty dollars, forty dollars, forty dollars, three days, three years to build.
And a yearly cycle. And that's to buy a new module. And twenty-nine seventy-five is a year.
Yes.
On that module.
What's your name?
That was.
Well, last, Ted, we know is in the, the residences, not many do, I mean, I, I haven't got the exact number. But I know the town of Sandy Run area in terms of residences, the most I can find at this point is six and less than one. So I know that the entire of our county.
Randy, you said that.
The, the general cost. Employees pay.
Right, which is three percent increase. And then the county's gonna.
Well, this is a specific category. This isn't a specific, you go to the A grade, you're hoping they have the sheet. And I'll be happy to see. That cost is seventy-two thousand. Um, but that's the, that's the program that we're, we're talking a lot, internet services. Seventy, seventy dollars a person. That trap the drugs down, you got the four thousand, that's the last.
And that providing that service, the EAP.
Okay. In the statement.
Certainly, um, so the health insurance, there was a two percent increase in the health. There was a three percent increase in the debt. The county has absorbed a two percent increase, which is about thirty-three thousand.
Yeah.
And then the three percent increase is gonna be passed on to the. Um, it's between fifty cent and a dollar.
We're, we're going through, I mean, we had, no one's committed yet, but, but it's, but they did, they have, they're looking at the ISP, the, the Tri-City, like, you know, but some of the other, uh, co-ops are gonna get started. They're like, you know, the three or four, they're, they're, yeah. But we, we, I would talk my hand and get, I'm not certain. Just to have to do with that, we're looking at, uh, doing this grant, the application thing. It was pretty detailed. People would have to build it out and make it competitive. Certainly, that was a different, you know, if I do them, but I don't think they're good. You know, and that's like I was just mentioning, uh, James King, uh, this program is very much supported by what some of the staff and, and, and. And you got a lot of underserved areas that are getting part of this hack grant thing is to get it to the, to the, to the, so we, we have a lot of that. So we're rich. Well, it's an IT. You get, you get the ball, you get the cable out.
Oh, you're talking about, uh, salary or?
Yeah, it would help. No, it's not so. It's moving internet thing, but I think for TV, everything's streaming now, but I think all the stuff would be.
It's your cell phone, dude. Still, I mean, you, you would have to have, I mean, it would affect.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna get it from a cell phone, probably. Three, three, like, twenty-five, between outside and depressed and, and elderly. But, I mean, just down there, you know, we've been talking to Sheriff too, with all the volume of information they have to do. Uh, just, they, you know, the system needs to be updated. Wind spring's on. So there are issues about getting good, you know, revised broadband coverage and more modern, uh, fiber. And that's kind of my, and certainly, certainly get it on the whole county, but.
Aren't you ready? I love Robin that too. They've been discussing that most around me. They, they ordered us that.
They have to get an application of money too, like us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session to get a legal briefing on the opioid litigation case and a person, uh, personnel matter involving the salary status.
Give a second.
Someone, I'll say, I'll say.
About to move to second, that'd be, uh, we'd have a session taking those two items, I think. Joe Reston, I'll follow you.
Yes.
I'll stay on the first item.